Thank you.
We'll share this.
All right, I'd like to get started here.
Are you good to go Rebecca?
Thank you. All right, I'm gonna call the order this joint meeting of the Deschutes County Board of Commissioners and the Sisters City Council on November thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-five.
All right, can I do all join me for the pleasure of the reasons please?
Hey, I've been asked to do roll call, Counselor Ross.
Present.
Counselor Preedon.
There.
Counselor Pellerin.
Here.
And I'm here. Council President McDougall. The mayor is out this evening with a personal engagement.
And for the board.
Non emergency.
Non emergency.
That's right. And for the Board of Commissioners was to do introductions.
Bill Chang, the Shute County Commissioner.
How do you dare to Shute County Commissioner from a sister's country?
And Tony Dubon, Chair. So yeah, the Board of Commissioners is here. Great to see everybody this evening.
So I did want to start this off by saying this is a workshop and so there will be not, there will not be visitor communication tonight as it was, it's also not reflected on the agenda as having visitor communication. So it's not a, not a last minute change. All right, so we're gonna go ahead and get started. Jordan, do you want to kick us off? I'll kick you off to kick that off.
I'll do the introduction of Scott Woodford, who I think you all know. He's done a couple other presentations here as part of this joint meetings in the past. But we're here to give you the latest and greatest on the urban growth boundary amendment process and kind of share the recent developments that the council had a resolution passed just a few nights ago on selecting a preferred concept for our UGB expansion area. So Scott.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Jordan. See you Commissioners. So just to get you caught up, the most recent history, I guess, was about a little more than a week ago when the council met at a public hearing to consider a resolution to direct the community development department to submit a land use application for adoption of the, of the UGB based on the, our UGB steering committee's recommendation. And so what was that recommendation? I put it in front of you on a map here. It's known also as Concept AA, but it's, as you can note in black and blue, the expansion area east of the existing community and a little bit to the north and south. Total three hundred and fourteen gross acres and a net of around two hundred and two net acres. That accounts for potential or future right of way that would not be able to be developed as well as some environmentally sensitive areas, floodplain, potential wetlands in certain locations. But that two hundred and two is near what the, our land needs had recommended for the twenty year, the twenty year horizon. So they, I just wanted to note that the steering committee's recommendation took place on July twenty ninth of this year. And shortly after that, the planning commission also reviewed it and endorsed the, the steering committee's map recommendation. At the November fifth meeting, council considered and deliberated a few different alternatives. At the request of council staff, put together some different scenarios that included potentially incorporating the McKenzie Meadows Village lands that the, that the county had recently approved their reason to make it priority one lands and potentially to be considered for inclusion in the, in the UGB. That had since been appealed by Central Oregon Land Watch to Luba. So that was information that the council had during their, during their last deliberations. But at council's direction, we put together some timelines if they were to want to consider incorporating McKenzie Meadows Village, what, what that would look like for our process, given that it's under appeal through Luba. Or we'll be starting that process soon. One scenario contemplated pausing the process for about six months. That's the maximum amount of time that we thought we could pause our process and not miss out on the January first, two thousand and twenty-seven deadline, which is to comply with the new state laws, the Oregon Housing Needs Assessment requirements. They basically grandfathered this in because we were already in a UGB process. But if we were not to locally adopt by that time, then we would have to do, start over on, on our analysis. Not completely over, but there would be a lot more time and effort put into recalculating our numbers and going back through an engagement process. So the council was, it seemed, its consensus wanted to not miss that deadline. So we worked back from that deadline and felt that we could pause the process for about six months before we'd have to start again. And because the process we need to go through, if you'll recall, is both through the city and the county, a comprehensive plan map amendment, they could take six, six, seven months. We would need time to prepare that. So that was something we had the council consider. The council also, we also put out a timeline where they would just pause the process indefinitely until the appeal process played out. And that would probably involve us missing that, that January first, two thousand and twenty-seven deadline. But they wanted to consider those lands because of, you know, the scoring that, that those properties were, that they received as part of our process scored pretty well. They have a willing developer and, and, and we're willing to meet our affordable housing guidelines. But there were some concerns obvious, obviously with the appeal timeline. And there was concerns, I think, with access. The fire marshal was going to require a, a third access, a secondary or third emergency access in addition to the ones that, that they have now that would require access through Forest Service land and approval through ODOT. So I think it's a combination of factors led, even though it was a tough decision and it wasn't a unanimous decision, ultimately it was a three-two vote to support Concept AA and before cannot include the MMB. So in terms of the next steps for us now, we have, all we have done is agreed on the map. I think there's some misconception out in the community and maybe on the part of some media, not on. That, that means that if we've adopted the, the UGB and we have not done that yet. So that's, that's the next step. Talking with our consultants, they're already at work writing the findings, which are quite lengthy for something like this. And it's two different applications. And so we're preparing those applications to be submitted hopefully at the end of January. Both to the city and the county, we anticipate hopefully can get approvals through those processes by mid two thousand and twenty-six. And then after that adoption, it goes to DLCD where they can either approve the local decision, deny the decision and return it to the local government for revision or refer to the Land Conservation and Development Commission for their review and decision. And I just want to note that the city and county decisions are also appealable to, to Luba. Just want to make that clear. And if we get through all that, then we're going to move on to area planning, which is the, the next layer of detail that we apply to our UGB lands. Right now it's just a, as you can see on, on this map, it's just, it's all blue. The area plan will start to kind of identify different land uses and where those land uses will go because we need not only residential, but we need employment lands and parks and we need a school site. And so that process will help determine where those go and start to apply comprehensive plan designations for the map. And then it'll also give, provide more information in terms of transportation corridors, where, where the, where the larger corridors will, will go, where, how it would be served utility wise, what kinds of improvements into our system need to be made to accommodate that development and character, kind of the character of, of the development. Some policy language that will help guide future projects. So once we get to that point, then we'll be able to, well, there's another step on top of that, which was update our annexation orders. Make sure that we are in position once we start entertaining annexations that, that the councils, that is clear in terms of what the expectations are for annexation. And then after that's done, then we can, we can start entertaining annexations. And that's another thing I just want to point out that the city's not annexing this land. We're waiting for property owners to petition the city to annex. And we'll measure those annexations versus our area plan and our criteria. Any questions that I can answer?
I have a question then. If a couple people had said that they are opposed to be, being included, do you just let them stay out of the expansion?
So the, just, just objections to being in the, in the incorporated or included in the urban growth.
Right.
It's not a, it's not a state criteria for not including them. So if there were higher goals for the community that might involve those property owners, despite their objections, you can still bring those properties in. It's not, we, we obviously try to look for property owners that want to come in. You know, if we have choices between different properties, one property owner says, I want to be in. One says that I don't, we'd probably take the ones that do. But that, that by itself is not reason not to take a property in.
So I want to jump in for just a moment before we get any further. I, I do want to say thank you. You know, I, we asked you to expedite the zoning change for the McKenzie Meadows Village. And you did. And I watched the hearings and I saw that you put in extra effort and kind of put, put the pedal to the metal. You know, everything takes a long time. You know, there's time between meetings and then research and time between other meetings. And so, you know, of course it couldn't be in, in twelve days. But I, I didn't want to not say thank you and not acknowledge the work that you did to support us in this process. And we can continue the discussion, but I, I wanted to make sure we didn't leave that out.
Yeah, I agree with that. I'd like to, to talk about that question and, and the answer to that. We have, you know, people here in the room that live in this area that we've chosen for the urban growth boundary. And the one thing that everybody should know in the public is if you live in those areas, there's no requirement to become part of the city. Annexation is not automatic. We don't force people to come into the city. All five of us on the city council realize that this is a twenty year plan. Not all the land is coming in right away and probably shouldn't. In, in many ways, slow growth is good growth. Obviously, we're looking for some of the easier land to come in sooner rather than later. So we have opportunities for some affordable housing and some neighbor, some new neighborhoods to come in a little more quickly. But some of the other areas that are a little further away, I'd like to tell those landowners, don't worry too much because you're in control of your own destiny, to be honest. You're still the landowner, you have full control of your property. And if, if there are areas around you that are annexing in, that doesn't necessarily mean that you have to be at all. And you can choose to remain autonomous with other areas around you in the, in this, coming into the city through the annexation process. So don't worry too much out there, people. Thanks.
I want to, with that said, we have a certain number of acres that we need. And if we exclude fifteen, twenty, thirty or fifty percent of those acres, whatever that number is, I don't know what that number is because it really is not clear to me. That could leave us in a position where we don't have enough acreage in Concept AA to meet the defined land needs that we had. So bringing something in that the state says we can do, but we know we're not going to ever develop on it, to me seems to be counterintuitive to the process that we're trying to do. This is my ten cents.
So that's good. I'm pretty sure I know the answer to this, but there's inclusion of the UGB, then there's annexation. At what point along the way does a property become part of the city tax base? It's after annexation, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. So, so you know, when you get brought into the UGB, it doesn't mean they're gonna, the city's gonna start taxing you.
You're, are you asking if we're taking your money now, Phil?
Just, you know, there might be people who are concerned about that.
That's a good point.
It, it might to understand though, from my reading, and we've not talked about this. If land is identified and owner doesn't want to bring it in, they stay in the county rolls, which is fine. But I think that means that should development want to occur on that land, it would then be something the city would want to be involved in the planning on as opposed to just the county?
Are you saying if it is?
In other words, I have, I own a chunk of land and I don't want to be in the city. But I might want to subdivide it. I've got fifty acres and I want to make, want to make some five, ten acre house lots. My understanding is when that land is bought into the UGB area, from what I've read, I could be wrong. So please correct me if I am, that the process of dividing that land would be a joint decision between the city and the county? I mean, how does that work? Because the idea is that planning at that point in time should reflect what the city wants, not what the county wants. As I understand it, even though in the county tax base, that's the way it was at least in other areas where I've lived and worked. I don't know how that works here.
The way that we have facilitated that in the county is that we have intergovernmental agreements with each of our cities and we delegate that authority for planning, building and code enforcement to, to the cities. So the cities then control. Now, it's of course subject to the zoning and, and everything at the time, but that's been our practice in the past. I don't want to predetermine or put the board in a position where that wouldn't be the case here. But that's what we have with, for example, with the cities of Bend and Redmond, is that the city has that jurisdiction by, via the intergovernmental agreement, the IGA.
That was my understanding as well, but you said it much better than I did.
Nick, did you say, you said planning, zoning and code enforcement?
Correct. We would retain, for example, onsite septic systems, given that that's our, we're the, we're the contract entity on behalf of the state for, for Department of Environmental Qualities rules.
So yeah, with the introduction of this and the, you know, the excitement around this issue, I just want to show support for doing the right thing for sisters. You know, if there's a land watch appeal, there's a land use decisions being done here. But please make sure you're always just making the decision that makes sense here. And then, you know, we can support or, I mean, the, the politics are getting really interesting in the state of Oregon's land use system because it's kind of ground to a halt in some areas. So don't, don't be, I'm just showing support. Don't be bowled over by some of these things. Do what's right for sisters and then let's figure it out from there. So I'm just showing that, that kind of support. Yeah. Because, you know, the, the UGB that you're going to propose will come to us and then we'll be, you know, having a discussion also.
I think going back to Counselor Ross's comment about if we get to a point where we find out in this concept, this preferred area, I don't know, ten years from now, fifteen years from now, that property owners do not want to be annexed in or not offering to be annexed in. DLCD has confirmed with us that we do have opportunity to do another amendment proving that need. So I don't want people to think that this is it. Yeah, we will continue to grow, we will continue to need to look at our land use and our needs based on our population growth.
And, you know, I, I know it's a comfort, but there are also opportunities to trade out lands. You know, if there's, you know, if you bring lands into your UGB and then a, you know, a, a chunk in the corner, you realize later that's not a, a good expansion area and it hasn't been annexed yet. You can, if there are processes to trade that out for some other lands.
And we had some advice about that land swapping. I'm, I'm hoping that maybe there'll be some new legislation that will help with this. But from what I understand, Scott, refresh my memory, if we had an issue around rent indebtedness or what was it called?
Oh.
That, why we couldn't do that, we didn't qualify for the land swap was a.
I think what Commissioner Chang is talking about is a different.
That's different. Oh, that was the, the House bill.
One time.
That was the House bill.
Yeah.
Excuse me. Yeah, okay. So, but we did look into land swap and found that there were some restrictions. And could you elaborate a bit more on, on that?
Are you talking about the, the one, the one time UGB?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Doing a land swap.
Well, it's just, yeah, you just have to make, if you want to bring some in, you have to bring some out. So you have to have a willing property owner willing to take their properties outside of the UGB to bring new ones in. And that's not a guarantee that, that they want to do that.
Do you remember the qualifications for the land swap?
Well, I.
It's okay if you don't because I don't, I can't remember either, but I thought we were hitting kind of a roadblock on land swaps.
I'm not talking about like the, the rent burden.
Yes.
That's, okay, that's a slightly different one. That's the one time UGB.
That's the one time.
Where you have to, you have to meet certain qualifications as a city, one of them being like fifty, fifty percent of your, no, twenty-five percent of your residents are, are, are extremely rent burdened, something along those lines. And we, we looked into that and we determined that we did not qualify for that. So we wouldn't be able to take advantage of it.
Yeah.
That. Our hopes are that could change at some point, that restriction.
And, and there are very few, I mean, so that authority has existed for a little while now. And there are very, very few cities in, in, in the state of Oregon that have utilized it yet in part because it's so constrictive. So I mean, I, I, I think that, that does point to opportunities to, to, to modify that legislation. And, you know, I also want to point out that we have seen in this, in this region, you know, in Deschutes County, we have seen several legislated UGB expansions, yes, in exchange for affordable housing commitments. So, you know, Stevens Road Tract, Parkside Place, North Point Vista in Redmond and the SB or the fifteen thirty-seven. I mean, so these are all examples of, of times when the legislators has said, you know, if this property will commit to doing a certain amount of affordable housing, we will, you know, essentially grant an expedited opportunity to, to expand a, a city UGB to, to bring that land in. So, so, you know, Counselor, Counselor, I'm sorry. Senator Broadman, who used to be Counselor Broadman, he was very involved in the Stevens Road Tract legislation. So I mean, he's, he's very familiar with, you know, with this, this legislative approach to UGB expansions.
I actually attended the meeting last, was it Wednesday night? Yes, I was here. And I did appreciate, but you mentioned Gary, what was actually the net result of what you needed for your UGB? I thought it was like two hundred and fifty acres. Was it really the net of the two hundred?
That was, that term was the gross, we were using that term as a gross acreage at the time. So it was really, I think, around a hundred and eighty that we needed approximately. So we're a little bit higher than what our land needs recommended. But our, we think that we have a justifiable, we're within that kind of plus minus that actually twenty acres is not going to be an issue with DLCD. Does that answer your question?
Sure. Thank you.
All right. And I, I think it largely accounts for open space. So if we had to, if we had to back that off, I think we, we could and still meet our minimum requirements.
Well, I love driving in Redmond and I see the little farms that are still in the city. So, you know, and I think about New York, when you see the person that never sold out and they've been there for a couple hundred years. I mean, it's, it is fascinating because some people just, they want their property and they, they don't ever want to give it up.
Okay, do we have anything else on that subject or ready to move along to the next one? Okay, this one's a nail biter too. So, so we're going to be talking about the Sisters Recycling Center. Yep.
Yeah, who, who knew that Sisters has a recycling center? Yeah?
All right, all right, all right, good, good, okay. Yes.
So we do, it's actually a city owned property. We have a recycling center, it was kind of a legacy facility from an era when the city actually did garbage service here, collection service, probably twenty, thirty years ago, before we, we started franchising for that, before recycling became, you know, curbside, we had a need for more of these facilities, you know, around the state. And so for the last twenty years since, or over twenty years since we made improvements to that recycling center, we've been, you know, operating it, contracting with Republic Services to do the, you know, the weekly, you know, cleanups and, and servicing of the, the containers. And so the council, because of Republic Services, you know, the cost for servicing the recycling center continues to escalate every year. And, you know, the RMA, the Recycling Modernization Act has, you know, been passed and is being implemented now. The question came up, what is the future of our recycling center? Do we still need this as a facility, as a, as an amenity in our community? So we've been studying different options of what to do with this recycling center. And a couple, you know, figures, a couple key pieces of information, I think that's relevant. Why we thought it would be a good to update the county is the recycling center doesn't just serve Sisters residents. We don't do curbside glass here yet. That's, that's still up for consideration. And so the recycling center collects commingled recycling, cardboard, glass, motor oil. So our residents use it for glass, you know, and depending on how much, you know, maybe wine or mayonnaise jars you use, you may be there on a monthly basis and then.
Jars are mainly now in plastic.
Yeah, I guess, sorry.
Find it in glass because it tastes a thousand times better.
How about Adam's peanut butter? I don't, I was trying to come up with a name. Solid dressing.
Pickles, jelly.
Pickles, yeah. So, you know, so, so something to keep in mind is it's a, you know, facility that county residents use a lot, right? You know, county residents currently in the area, unincorporated areas around Sisters, which there's ten thousand plus, don't have commingled recycling as a curbside service, don't have glass. Also probably get, you know, delivery boxes that they need to do something with their cardboard. So the county has been subsidized, helping subsidize the cost of the recycling center about forty thousand per year. And I think that goes back probably a decade, you know, or at least in the last, you know, five to eight years. But that hasn't changed, right? It's been held steady at forty thousand a year. But meanwhile, recycling market, the commodity market, you know, with trying to, for Republic and others to resell this stuff has gone down, right? So they're not making as much money off of the glass and the commingled recycling. So the cost to, you know, operate and maintain the recycling continues to go up. And, you know, now with the RMA and the consideration that the Northwest Transfer Station, just down the road, you know, fifteen minutes or so at Friar is going to be expanded to be, you know, pro depot, which will allow more materials to be collected there, right? We're going to start recycling more plastics and films and things like that. You know, kind of brings up this question again, what is the future of our recycling center? If there's going to be an expanded opportunity just down the road? This is mostly an amenity for county residents that, you know, come into Sisters, which is very convenient to do the recycling. And then we're also considering, what do we do with glass? Do we go to curbside? Do we look at other opportunities for recycling glass? So that, you know, eventually all our, all the customers and sisters will be taken care of in terms of the recycling needs. So, you know, if you guys want to increase your subsidy, that would be awesome. That would, you know, be one option to, for the council to consider. But we've also started surveying our community. We had about four hundred and fifty-ish people respond to a survey about, you know, what would you like to see? You know, in terms of different options, like would you pay more for curbside glass? Would you pay more to keep the recycling center? You know, how likely would you be to go to the Northwest Transfer Station to recycle your materials? And, you know, the answers are actually kind of interesting. Folks do actually like the recycling center, even folks that live in the city limits. And I think it's because of the glass and, you know, the fact that we have a lot of Amazon deliveries and cardboard. So glass and cardboard are the big materials that folks use. And, and more so than actually wanting curbside glass is what so far what we've seen in doing our outreach. Which again, presents an interesting, you know, question for the council of what do you do with the future of this facility? Which again, is probably more used by the county than our city residents, but our city residents also like it. And, you know, the cost there is that city is likely going to be subsidizing county residents going forward if we choose to, to continue to operate this facility. Because we're going to have to make up the difference somehow. Either rates are going to go up for our customers or the city's just going to have to start paying Republic Services to make up that cost, you know, between what county gives and what the cost is to service the, the facility. So, you know, we, we've had discussions with Tim, I think he's here tonight to talk about, you know, the landfill siding update, which has been very helpful for us. But, you know. we thought it was pertinent to bring it up tonight because it is a facility that we both have an interest in. And if we are seriously considering doing something different with that facility or that property, then I want to give you a heads up. Um, because I know there might be conversations happening within the county too. We've received some of those calls from some of those subdivisions around our, our city, uh, of an interest in commingled recycling in the, in the county. So.
Yeah.
Quick comment, I think the thing that struck me the most about that, because it was very, in a number of responses, but it was almost, it's a very high percentage of people that said they would not go to Friar to take their recycling. I was amazed at how many people said, no, they wouldn't. So as we look at not landfill and we look at new landfills, we look at how we're trying to eliminate what's going into the waste stream. That's a concern to me as we move forward with whatever we do. We have to figure out how we're gonna be handling that stuff that we really don't want to have in the solid waste dump area because it just fills it up.
I know there's discussion about, uh, distant rural service for recycling services. So that means there will be curbside, and I guess I, I'm not thinking of the specific times or what's going on, but I think the future is a lot more curbside service, even in, uh, rural.
I thought you would pay like twenty dollars or pick up every other week or something. Isn't that what you said, Tim? I mean, we were gonna get it out there?
Yeah, so we just happen to have our experts in here. So, uh, but as I say, rural and distant rural, so some of the terminology we get to. And then there's choices coming, so.
Yeah, so at, at one point we were looking.
I think so.
Uh, oh, yeah. Uh, my name is, uh, Tim Brownell, uh, Director of Solid Waste Department for Duchesnes County. Good evening. Um, uh, we were looking at one point of doing subscription service of people who could opt in for uh, commingled recycling service for the areas outside Sisters. And this region is, is what we refer to as distant rural, which currently doesn't have any, any recycling service available. Um, that would have been, because it, it probably fifty percent or less might sign up for that service. That would have been twenty dollars a household a month to have that service, so.
But every other week too.
Every other week.
Yes.
Um, however, uh, under state law, under state statute, we actually are not able to offer subscription service. We have to offer what's, what's referred to as universal service. Everybody has to be offered the service and they have to have the opportunity to have that service at the same price as garbage service. So the, the proposal now that we've received from Republic is to, um, have that service offered at six dollars a household per month, um, additional. And so our, their, their garbage rate, whether they use recycling or not for this region, would be six dollars, uh, a household per month more. Um, uh, and that would be, uh, every other week collection.
That explains how Sisters works to me now as well, because we're pretty much, if you get garbage, you get recycling and and, and yard waste, yeah. Thank you.
Yeah, and, you know, so i- if, you know, you guys go to a universal commingled, right, that I guess theoretically means there would be less usage from county residents of the recycling center, right? Which could po- potentially mean, what does that mean for the county subsidy of the recycling center? Which factors into our, you know, our consideration of, you know, how much this thing will cost us and cost our customers, our, our citizens to, to pay for a recycling center that may not be getting a lot of usage, uh, in, you know, going forward into the future.
So, uh, this discussion, uh, you know, during our budget process, there was a discussion about, well, do we start plugging this in now or uh, do we do it after the budget? So we're, we're in November now, so about four or five months have passed. But it'll pop up at some point and we'll, we'll discuss it as a community, and this will be the discussion, uh, adding that universal distant rural curbside recycling service. So it's, it's on the horizon, I guess, is the message.
Tim, does the, uh, would that commingle, uh, include glass?
It would.
That glass would be.
Glass would not be offered, uh, in, in rural or distant.
Yeah, for, for our, um, residents here, it'd be four dollars a, um, a month, uh, to add glass for just monthly service. Uh, well, we do buy monthly, they do buy monthly billing, so, yeah.
Um, a- another question, Tim. So the Recycling Modernization Act, it, it, uh, it does provide some, uh, you know, financial incentives, subsidies to, um, improve collection and transport of, of materials. Is there, are there ways that those financial incentives could come to play, uh, with this recycle center kind of, uh, structure? Um, system.
To a degree, yes. So, um, there are, uh, to Jordan's point, that there has been a reduction in the, the value of the recyclables. So that is impacting the economics of, of the collection service. However, at the same time, um, as of, uh, July of this year, um, the cost for transporting and processing recyclable materials has been, um, uh, basically cut by two-thirds. So there should be some offsets relative to the cost to provide that service from Republic relative to the, um, uh, the processing of, of the recyclables coming in through the recycling center. In addition, they are getting, um, uh, significant funding for the handling of glass as well. So.
Yeah, one of the options that we're also considering is, um, looking at expanding our recycling center to include the new R M A, you know, the pro depot materials. Which I know the counties, you guys are moving forward at the Northwest Transport Station, but, you know, just in terms of the survey and thinking about the convenience of what we have, right? If, if we do get in the situation where we're looking at keeping the recycling center, then do we also then just lean into, okay, let's then work with, you know, the C A A and, and do a pro depot here during the kind of the next round of those facilities being expanded. And that actually does offset some of the costs of operating the recycling center because there's reimbursables for having, you know, the ability to recycle your plastic film and, you know, containers and things like that. We think the site could probably accommodate that, um, but would probably have to think about security enhancements and, you know, try to get more staffing there. So there's more to kind of study about whether we want to go down that route.
So can you, uh, explain, uh, how, how does it work? Is it, does the city staff open and close it or maintain it? And then, uh, Republic grabs the containers or rotates the containers for the materials? So just, just so we all remember how it's all flowing.
It's, it's all Republic, you know, we'll, we'll do rounds and respond to calls if there's like illegal dumping or something. But Republic is the one that's responsible for servicing the site, but also stopping by once a day to make sure there's not too much contamination, because there's a lot of dumping, illegal dumping that happens there, or cross contamination with recyclables and stuff. So, you know, you need somebody there to sweep it up and keep an eye on things.
And Republic's doing that.
Yes.
And, and then, so then this is being driven by Republic saying, hey, this is costing more and more over time. We're gonna have to renegotiate. Is that where we're at?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah.
Because that whole load will be discarded if it's got garbage in it. So I, I realize there's probably a few letters, there's probably twenty-five, thirty-four more garbage bags that I can't see them. That's, that's probably one of the biggest problems. And frankly, while I've got a big can of garbage haulers sometimes with that, they couldn't, they're not pricing them, I haven't gained their value at all. I have to, to say that it is a problem for, you know, so it is the staff who's opposite, but it's not the staff. And I see people coming in and bags of garbage, you know, that's exactly what they are.
So they're throwing whole bags of garbage, it's not wishful recycling. No, I think, I think you could recycle this alongside.
Uh, I'd, I'd like to bring up a little side issue too, and that is, uh, Republic Services themselves. Um, let's not kid ourselves and think that everybody is one hundred percent satisfied with, uh, how they're, um, working our s- collection system. Um, and I'm not here to strike a pole or anything like that, but I think there's certainly some consideration about, should be some consideration about, are they the long-term answer as a company themselves for this region? And, um, you know, everybody's heard the stories about jurisdictions doing this and doing that. And I'm not afraid to say that I'm really disappointed in some of the things that they do, especially customer service. Um, you know, uh, I consider this area special. Central Oregon is a special place, and I think that we need companies to acknowledge that in their services. And it's not all about just the trash and just the recycling. Sometimes we have to think about the long-term effects and what are the contracts like? And having a seven-year window before you can replace your garbage service, um, is a little, uh, extreme. And I'd really, at some point, if not tonight, um, start thinking about what do we do as a region? Uh, because we're all in the same boat with this, uh, particular company. And I'm not mad at him or anything, but I certainly would like to see, um, uh, better service and more improvement in those areas, uh, before we go too far down the road about some bigger decisions about landfills and things like that. So. I'm just throwing that out there.
Yeah. Can I ask, so, um, Tim, we've been speaking with the city of Bend and the city of Redmond about franchise agreements in, in, in recent months, uh, I, I'm guessing that Sisters has a similar franchise agreement with, with Republic and.
Yes.
Are, are you actively in the process of?
Um, we're not active, but, uh, we certainly would be a part of that conversation. Um, and we've been following, you know, what the work you've been doing with possibly renegotiating these franchises. I think as a region, it makes a lot of sense to be on the same, you know, format and, yeah.
Yeah. Uh, and then, can I just ask, so the recycle center is a separate agreement from your franchise? It's not, it's not bundled in there? Okay. So then, you keep those things. Separate, yeah, that's good.
That just means we got one agreement right, which is good. Uh, so we'll see how the rest goes. But, uh, I am one member of council. I'm obviously not representing the whole council in this conversation, but, uh, I'd be interested to keep um, in touch with each other as a region and just make sure, uh, that everybody kind of knows what's going on. So much is going on that I think Republic Services is, obviously, hopefully they're smart enough to be on notice about it and, and want to discuss, uh, discuss some of this stuff as a region-wide issue, not just a local issue with each franchisee.
We, you, also you're tracking that, that, uh, Redmond has, has given term, noted, notice of termination to.
Yeah, like a year ago, right? I mean, they're, yeah.
It's got a long runway though.
Yeah, it is. Yeah, yeah.
For their benefit, um, I would say, but yeah.
I mean, it, it gives, it would, it gives Republic the opportunity to, to kind of.
Adjust.
Yes, to, to get to a better.
Yeah, we're well aware of that part and, um, but at the same time, we're also aware that other people are having some discussions and I, uh, to be honest, I'd, I'd like us to be included, at least as a, as an interested party, just to see if there's something we want to, um, join with. Yeah. So we had, we had a work session meeting on this and we kind of laid it out as the Board of Commissioners for Duchesnes County with the intention of getting back to it, and it's about time to get around back to it. So it's good that we're comparing notes right now, so we'll be talking about that also.
Just a lot of topics that are popping right here. One of the things that's been mentioned to me more than once related to Friar, uh, especially when we were trying to deal with the flat problem. Trying to deal with cleanup and stuff, salt and food around the house. Is there an opportunity to have even more cleanup days by your end or to have it open some hours of just that? In the week, so.
You mean Wednesday to Saturday? I said Wednesday to Saturday from eight to four and don't be late. Yes. Yes.
I think discourages use to some degree. Uh, so I understand the need is staffing, uh, policies. But even if there was some, some times when it's open, either extended hours during cleanup periods or, or. It would be helpful, just, just, uh, I'm not telling them how to do it, but I've heard it a lot, came up again in the, uh, flat fire deep, we had the other night. That was concerning to a lot of people, especially folks that own a property and trying to do something to, to make it more fire wise. And if you live it up, if we're flat firing through, you could see what happens when you do treatment to land on that fire, lay it right down on the ground.
You know, for all of our, uh, for all of our good and safety need to be facilitating people's disposal of, uh, the materials that are generated by, uh, putting defensible space around it. Um, the, the question is, you know, what are the best ways to do that and how do you paint? Um, and, and, um, you, you know, um, like one wrinkle, one wrinkle, uh, of, of concern with that is that, um, our compost operation is a grossly undersized, um, and not landfill. And so if we, you know, if, if uh, if, if we're overwhelmed with volume of, you know, clean, organic yard debris material, um, at certain points in time, we are putting that directly in the landfill, which, uh, is, it's, it's a good thing to do those defensible space treatments, and it's also it kind of kills me, kind of kills me to be, to be, uh, filling up our, our very, very, at this point, very limited, very precious landfill space with, with that material. Um, so, uh, we, you, you know, so the key, uh, a, a key to un- unlocking that for us is, uh, you know, developing a, a larger compost facility, an expanded compost facility. But there's, there's a bunch of other strands to be looked at. I, I mean, I, I was talking, uh, yesterday, um, yeah, just yesterday with Chief Pryor and one of the chiefs from, uh, La Pine, uh, or Sun River District, sorry, about air curtain. Right? So, um, so there's, there are, there are many ways to make material go away, and the, the question is just what makes, what makes the most sense in terms of, um, you know, costs, you know, effectiveness and, you know, uh, the other impacts.
I do, I think one of the people we're missing there in other parts of the state are commercial companies that do accept that degree for it and then turn it into compost and other sorts of things as commercial operating.
All right, I'm gonna. Are we doing anything in Redmond with that facility for composting there?
Um, we're collecting yard debris there, but we aren't composting that material. It's just like Friar.
Um, I'm gonna jump in here. Um, we've got, we're, we're running a little, little late, so, um.
God, which is a great topic.
It is. So, well, hopefully our, our, uh, you know, wh- why don't we go ahead and skip down and, and talk about the landfill sighting since you're right here with us already.
There we go. Now we're really gonna go to the next level.
Yeah.
Yes, um, so, uh, yeah, the next chapter in, in the, the story of, of landfill sighting here in the county. This will be a story we're gonna be telling for the next six years until we get it cited and opened. Um, so we, we were here about a year ago, um, uh, talking about, uh, giving you an update on the landfill sighting process. We've gone through approximately a two-year process of, of, uh, developing the criteria by which we would, would look at, um, the suitability of sites around the county to be an appropriate location to, to site a landfill. We started with two hundred sites, a little over two hundred potential sites. Um, and over the course of about, um, uh, fourteen months, came down to two sites with a recommendation to, um, uh, develop a landfill at a, a site called the Moon Pit Site, which was a, uh, aggregate mine just to the east of the Badlands off of Highway twenty. So east of Bend, heading out towards Milliken. Um, we were not able to successfully negotiate a purchase agreement with the owners of that property. Um, so we went back to the board. We had a second site, which is a site we refer to as the Roth East Site. It's out by the, the base of Pine Mountain, so, uh, another nine miles or so to the east of, out Highway twenty. Um, there are some, uh, potential concerns. They're more environmental. That's where the Moon Pit Site was disturbed property and. There are some potential concerns. They're more environmental. That's where the Moon Pit Site was disturbed property and aggregate mine. The Roth East Site is basically EFU farmland, grazing land, but pretty close and recently made closer to the the core areas of the sage grouse habitat amongst other winter range areas. So the board directed staff to go back and see if there might be some other suitable sites that might have a slightly small, we were working on a hundred-year timeframe for for a landfill. We said, let's take a look if there might be something that might have eighty years or or more capacity that we discarded the last go-round. Interesting to find that during the period of about a year in which we had gone through the process and excluded sites, one site was able to come back into consideration. That was, it was ruled out because it had a wildlife overlay and in particular Golden Eagle overlay that was what we considered a fatal flaw. ODF and W had come back and actually became more specific with the locations of the nesting area, which took it from a full wild exclusion overlay to the possibility of doing mitigation, because the the nest is a little more than a mile and a half away from this potential site. So it actually allowed a site to come back into consideration. It's a site we call the Horse Ridge Site. It's also out Highway twenty, just opposite on the south side of Highway twenty from where the Badlands are. So similar location as the Moon Pit Site, also aggregate mines. This one's a little different in that it's not a hard rock aggregate mine. It's pretty unique in that area. It's, it was mined for the soils, alluvial soils drainage material and and packing material. So serendipitously, serendipitously maybe, it came back into consideration. And we reconvened the Solid Waste Advisory Committee. And they made a recommendation to staff to do a full, what we call final fight site evaluation. Do a deep dive to see if this really has no issues that would prohibit our ability to to permit on that site. We're currently, and it's going to take us about another five months to do that full evaluation of the site. If successful, then we will come back to the the board with that site and Rocky's site as as potential sites to move forward with, and we're anticipating the SWAC will recommend one of those two sites as the preferred site. Also, what we're doing is we're going to be meeting with the the commissioners next week to talk about the process of a potential procurement of that site and the other site, so that when we come back, we would have an actionable agreement by which we could move forward if the the board chooses to move forward with one of those sites. So this delays our process, this has delayed our process by about a year. I think that the boring good news is that every year, and actually every quarter, but on an annual basis, we do a full evaluation of the capacity of our current landfill. When we started this process, we anticipated the landfill would be at capacity in twenty twenty-three. We've seen slower growth in waste, in waste stream, and we anticipated at the start of this process. We are now anticipating that the landfill will be reached capacity in November of twenty thirty-one. So we we have a little bit more time and we're going to need every minute of it to get through this process.
The really good news is that I visited the site in twenty nineteen, Roth East, and that was a cattle ranch. So anyway, Realtor showed it to me. So at least I've got that vision, and now we have something else that I think, don't we have three property owners with that one?
We have three property owners, one of which is is ODOT.
Is that good or bad?
That's actually good.
Okay.
They would like the money.
They would like the money, oh.
They need money too.
There you go.
Well, I was just in the ODOT building today, and their technology was superb, so that was nice to know.
Any conversation on that question?
So those transport trucks that will leave the transfer stations, they'll go out to this facility. Not landfill will still be, the the drop-off location for residential drop-off will be the same. Put it in a truck, and instead of going around the corner, it'll go out to this location, and this location won't be a, you know, residential drop-off. It won't be a retail location in any sense. So just remember that. It is going to be just trucks going in and out during business hours, weekdays, you know, a little bit more. Just that drop-off location.
Thank you for that.
I also want to mention that there is a tie-in between the new landfill site and this franchise agreement discussion. Before we proceed with, you know, spending millions of dollars to purchase a new landfill site and dig a big hole and set up all the infrastructure, we do want to have confidence that the waste material that is generated in our region is is going there. And that is part of the discussions about new franchise agreement structures that is going on right now. So we, we very much want to make sure that whatever franchise agreement you land on with your, with your collectors is, you know, supports what's the phrase, flow control? Flow control to, you know, our future landfill site and and also, you know, recycling the sites, composting material sites and other things. So there's, you know, as we're, as we're seeing tonight, there's a lot of intertwining of city-county interests around around, you know, all kinds of solid waste, you know, waste we want to divert from the landfill, waste we want to put in the landfill. So I'm excited that we are having this discussion and look forward to hopefully good partnerships around us.
Yeah, I think that just goes into what Jordan said, which is, you know, as a region, we're all interconnected. You know, we have similar interests. We may be this, you know, almost the size of Connecticut or whatever, but there's only four cities here in Shuse County, so let's work together best we can. Obviously, La Pine has their own thing going on, but I think the rest of us should stick together and see if we can't just make the best decisions for all of us concerned. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Really appreciate your time. Thank you, Tim. All right, I'm gonna back us up to C and the Affordable Housing Update.
Yeah, I'll, this one will be probably a little shorter, so we can get to the main event. But yeah, so thank you again, County Commission, for, you know, your your help in making adjustments to the the agreements for the ARPA funds and, you know, the agreements between the city and county. You know, the update here is that things are still moving forward with Northwest Housing Alternatives for the forty-unit Affordable Housing Project. They are closing on their financing on the twenty-fifth, so we're excited for that to finally come, coming down to the finish line. It's a nearly a twenty million dollar project to deliver these forty units. They have, you know, as you guys know, they have the land use approvals, they have the permits ready to go, lands all partitioned and ready. It really just comes down to getting that financing, which is the combination of the OCHS grant and now a tax-exempt bond that they went to market with, which is, I think, seven and a half million, and of course, the five hundred thousand from the city from the county of those ARPA funds. And so they'll be breaking ground if everything goes well with the closing, which we believe it will. All signs are pointing to to green, that they'll be breaking ground next month and have that completion done by March of two thousand twenty-seven. So it's been, it's been a long time coming. You know, this is dates, what, five years now? So I know we're all looking forward to that. There's lots of other great projects happening. Peter Hoover from Sisters Habitat is here tonight. They are chugging along on affordable housing projects in our community. Ten units being built in the Woodlands subdivision, which if you've had a chance to tour that subdivision, it's a great model.
We were there for the Affordable Housing Tour.
That's right. You were there for the groundbreaking, so I don't need to talk about that. So you got that whole spiel.
And a photo.
Yeah.
Did you, excuse me, did you say for the Northwest Housing, they're doing forty apartments? Forty, and so they're half a million each? You're saying now it's twenty, half a million each per an apartment?
Yeah.
They're not sharing any walls or anything? I mean, honestly, that seems really like a lot of money.
When that started five years ago, the the number was fourteen, so it's gone up from fourteen to twenty in in the five years. And it's unfortunate that some of these material and construction costs have gone up so fast that they have to keep adjusting their numbers and keep adjusting their numbers. You know, to be honest, a lot of credit to them to keeping the scope together, and they haven't reduced the number of apartments one time. It's been forty the whole time, so it's only cost. Apartment number has not scaled at all.
But you know, sometimes when you do units like this, even at our ninety-five, excuse me, seventy-five permanent supportive housing in Redmond, they're going to have a few people in that project. They're cottages, but that actually are like, they're not quite the clientele of the rest of the people, and sometimes you need that mix.
Like market rate.
Right, you need a few people that bring balance and follow rules and things and set examples.
Don't laugh, Michael.
Anyway, we have, we have something in Bend that we actually approved, like twenty twenty. It's two hundred and forty apartments, and they've had over a thousand nine-one-one calls in, like, almost, like, eleven point two months. A lot of nine-one-one calls. Anyway, just to give balance, that's what Russell told us they were doing in Redmond, that he was at of the seventy-five units, I believe, like, five or six, seven were going to be just regular people living there, setting an example.
Well, because of the, where the funding is coming from, you know, these will be all restricted to eighty percent or less. There'll be one unit for the property management, and it's going to be owned and operated by Northwest Housing. So they do care about the site, they care about the design, there's a community room and community spaces. So that's one of the advantages I think the council had in selecting them, you know, as the, you know, as the developer for this project is keeping that and sort of, you know, those considerations in mind.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, somebody's going to be living there, then you're saying?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it would be their employee.
Okay. Great, their person. Okay, well, that's good to hear.
Yeah, so yeah, you, you, you know, so you were a part of the groundbreaking for Habitat's developments there in the Woodlands subdivision. And then they're also working on nineteen units just back this way, Adams and Larch. So another cottage development with affordable housing units there. They have land use approvals. The city's committed to providing both a workforce housing grant from our urban renewal funds, and then also affordable housing grant as well for that project. And then another program the city has started a few years ago, and Northwest Housing has applied. Habitat has has shown interest and applied is an SDC deferral program, where you can defer your SDC payments. Another way to kind of, not a huge impact to the city, there is impacts, right, not collecting your SDCs for, you know, infrastructure projects, which we have a big list water and wastewater projects, but it's a way to kind of defer some of those costs for these these projects. So yeah, that's that's the latest and greatest on affordable housing.
Are the apartments, buildings in Sisters, are they full now? Pretty much so. Do you guys get a vacancy report? No, go ahead.
I don't have the 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 numbers. It's all just what I hear. But if you do drive by, the the latest development, The Grove, which was part of the Sunset Meadows Development, those are market rate. But pretty well occupied at this point, you know, there's the parking lots relatively full, especially at night. See a lot of lights on this time of year now, right? So, you know, that's just I mean, not really solid scientific evidence, but it does seem like things are.
I've heard it's over sixty percent, and then they're brand new, so, I mean, it's not too bad.
The Grove. Okay, because we were, we were getting reports that the vacancy when Ben Redmond for apartments is like eleven point one percent with those two. So I just wondered if we were full here.
Yeah, I've seen the the articles about Bend, you know, that that some, the rates are starting to come down a little bit.
Yeah, I would hope so.
Yeah.
People deserve to not be paying a cent.
Yeah, that's, that's the benefit of that. You know, bringing on a massive, hundreds and hundreds of units of apartments, having some of them be vacant for a little while, as the rents are flattening.
I think, you know, what are the problems we've been seeing paper a lot, not in other places. People, we talk about affordable workforce housing, and people make the assumption when they see these apartments at a market rate that why are those people living in there? And the answer is the market rate. Or a dilution. So hopefully, we'll start to see rents come down a little bit here. Safari, I think you have, but hopefully I'll have.
Yeah, I think, you know, the flip side of that is, as I do, that means developers kind of hold off a little bit on doing additional multifamily projects. We have a few more that are in the pipeline. I mean, they've been master planned, but they haven't, you know, they're not pulling permits yet. The Woodlands, you know, phase four is going to be multifamily, but that's, you know, they're not coming in for permits for that. They're still building their single-family homes. We do have our first, speaking of that, this is a side topic, but we have our first rapid yellow flashing beacon crosswalk in town across Highway twenty from the Woodlands development, so they punched through Sisters Park Drive. And so this new safe crossing goes over to our Gateway Park, which is our mobility hub. And you're all invited to come on Monday to the ribbon cutting for that. That's right. We might have to do that and then go to the new renter station, which they should be open again, right?
Are you going to teach the deer how to press the button when they cross? Did they figure that out? I hope so.
We just taught them how to use the flag.
Yeah, that's a very good idea.
All right, so we've got one more topic tonight, and we're going to turn it over to you, to the county, about our update on the district mapping outcomes.
Great, thank you very much. This topic has been covered across Central Oregon with the media today, given that the District Mapping Advisory Committee completed their work yesterday. I'm passing out right now the map that the committee recommended, Map C. On one side, on the, on the backside, it shows what the targets were, both for for population based on the twenty twenty census and based on registered voters as of November first of this year. To to back up, in June, we provided a high-level summary of how the committee was created, what the schedule may be. We've, the committee started meeting as expected in late August with their orientation meeting. They have met from about the first week of September through yesterday. Every week, it's been a very, very demanding and and extensive process with a really great team of of support, including our county clerk and GIS and others. I can go through if it's, if it's helpful or I won't. I mean, what were the criteria to to create the map? There were, there were several criteria from, of course, the districts need to be contiguous, utilize existing precinct lines, not unreasonably divide communities of common interest. Well, that was a huge question right out of the gate. What is a community of common interest? It's not defined in state law, in the courts, et cetera. One of the area, one of the ways that the committee defined that immediately was cities or resorts or unincorporated communities. And so I think you'll really see, other than Bend, which had to be divided, I've just given the the population of the city to create, to create somewhat equal districts across, across the county. So there's a lot of things that 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 the committee looked at. We checked in with the Board of Commissioners a number of times throughout the process, based on questions that the committee had. The board would weigh in, we would take that back to the committee, and they would continue working. Probably one of the keys, as you look at the back, was we aimed to create districts that did not have more than plus or minus five percent of either population or voters, so that there may be up to a ten percent range. And so you can see that that's what's on the back. As you compare that then to the map, map on the run. Of course, I brought about fifteen maps, and I'm sorry if there's not, but they are certainly available on media on our website, And I'm happy to pass mine. I'm happy to give mine to anybody as well.
Came around over here and then they went up on the.
Oh, great, okay.
Distribute those to people in the audience if people are interested.
So in addition, I'll just wrap it up really quickly. In addition to the the committee recommending this map, they also recommend, recommend that the board identify the districts, so there'll be five districts by lot. Well, what does by lot mean? I'll tell you, we learned. Well, what does by lot mean? I'll tell you, we learn every day in this process, how districting happens. Um, but by lot effectively means that you would draw numbers out of a hat. So, um, currently we have, uh, Commissioner DeBones in seat one, Commissioner Chang is in seat two, Commissioner Dares in seat three. Now we'll have seats four and five, literally they would pull those, so, let's start with the Redmond area, let's pull out the first number out of the hat, what number is that? That is now district number three. And then district, you know, what is the Sisters area? That's, whatever it is, that's what they, they recommended to the board. The board hasn't, had, this is the first conversation I've had with the board since DMAC completed their work yesterday. We'll have more of these conversations here in the weeks ahead with the board. The third recommendation that they made, uh, was that the map, if it's passed by voters, that redistricting occurs again after the twenty thirty census is released, which then is generally probably late twenty, uh, twenty, uh, twenty thirty one or twenty thirty two. Uh, so those were the primary three recommendations that they made yesterday. Um, at the staff level, we aim to, to begin to meet with commissioners here in very short order. Um, our facilitator chair, who is a non-voting member, Neil Bryant, um, will, will be with us to present the, the, the recommendations and then determine how the board would like to proceed, um, with a review of the maps and potentially a recommendation to the voters. So that's the synopsis of, of where we're at today and I'm happy to turn it over to commissioners or to whoever.
Are you gonna give it, you're gonna give us some of the first tidbits here?
Well, I, I, uh, I, I'm, I'm happy to share, I have many concerns with, uh, the product of the District Mapping Advisory Committee. That there are, there were many problems, uh, with this process along the way. Uh, the use of, uh, numbers of registered voters versus total population, uh, disenfranchises, uh, families essentially. You know, anyone who has, has people in their household under voting age, basically those people don't count, uh, anymore. Um, so that, that's an issue. Um, the ten percent variance between the, 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 the district sizes, uh, initially our, our guideline to the District Mapping Advisory Committee was, um, shoot for, you know, no more than a five percent variance in size between, between districts. Um, but, uh, they, you know, for, for various reasons, you know, not wanting to break up precincts, uh, and, and other reasons, they were not able to achieve, uh, better than a, a ten percent variance. So we bumped up the variance and, uh, what that means is essentially, uh, districts that are on the bigger side, um, the, the relative voting power of people in those districts is less than people in, in smaller districts. Uh, so that's a concern as well. Um, a, a number of times, the, the question of how do you address parochialism was raised. Um, so that, you know, the, the, the easiest way to illustrate that this for me is to say that, um, I could very easily imagine there being, uh, districted commissioners. If we, if we go with five districts, candidate comes from the district, only people from that district get to vote for those candidates and then, um, you only get to vote for one commissioner. If you're from district A, B, C, D, or E, you get, get to vote for one district. Well, right now you get to vote for all five, they're all at large. But if you only get to vote for one, one commissioner from the, the geography where you live, uh, the potential parochialism that might show up is, you know, you might hear things like, well, uh, you're not putting a landfill in my district, because my constituents don't want it. Um, but, you know, how do you, how do you cite a landfill that, you know, overall the county needs? Uh, on the flip side, you might see, uh, commissioners saying, well, you know, um, he got a roundabout in his district, I want one in mine. And, and, you know, you could, you can come back and say, well, you know, the, the traffic patterns and the traffic volume don't really, you know, lend themselves to having a roundabout, you know, in this spot in your district. Well, I don't care, you got a district, you got a, a roundabout in your district, I want one in mine. So I, um, there were a couple of, a couple of concepts that were suggested to deal with, with parochialism. You know, on the one hand, you could do, uh, four districts and an at-large chair. So at least there was one commissioner that, uh, was accountable to and responsive to all the voters. Um, I also, uh, put forward the idea of following what, what, what I'm calling the Missoula model. So in Missoula County, Montana, um, they have three districts and candidates need to come from the district. So, uh, you know that each geography of, of that county is represented on their, their Board of Commissioners. But then the, the counts, uh, the, uh, the commissioners are all elected at large. So everybody gets to vote for all three seats. Um, and each commissioner candidate needs to win enough votes across the entire county, um, that, you know, the, the, the whole populace of the county says that person represents me. So that, that's one, you know, that, uh, so, yeah, voter, you know, the, 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 total voters versus, you know, the, the total voters versus total population, parochialism question. Um, the, the five percent to the ten percent variance. And then, uh, just last week, the, the, the issue that came up is, uh, was, uh, the question of whether this, these maps, these mapped districts, uh, provide partisan advantage. Um, because the charge of the DMAC was, uh, not to favor any party or candidate. Um, but, uh, when a couple of members of the, the, the committee requested for the, um, uh, requested for staff to show them what the numbers of registered officers, uh, in different parties were by district. So you could understand whether there was partisan advantage being, uh, being provided here. Um, uh, that was refused by a majority of the, of the, of the committee. So they just, you know, we are not gonna look at that. Um, of course, what then happened was one of the committee members had to go and do it themselves. Uh, in between that last meeting and, and this one, you know, spent a couple of hours crunching a bunch of numbers that would have been super easy for the clerk to, to crunch for us. Um, and lo and behold, it showed that, um, there were, you know, basically, uh, Democratic voters were uh, disproportionately crammed into two districts, uh, so that, um, there was more Republican voters in three of the districts. Um, and, you know, that, that may not sound like a, a significant issue, except that, uh, it is not a reflection of, uh, the proportions of those registered voters across Deschutes County. There, there are more, there are more registered Democrats than registered Republicans in Deschutes County. So, um, you know, having a Republican advantage in three of the, three of the five districts is, um, essentially, in my opinion, gerrymandering. So, uh, those are just a couple of, of, um, starting thoughts on concerns about this map.
Well, we had seven citizen members from Deschutes County provide, uh, this analysis. Uh, and I want to thank them for their, their efforts here. Uh, it's good, it, it is a partisan process, we knew it going in, it's, it, it triggers people, gets people wound up. Uh, you know, this process was started by a petition to, uh, to, to go to five. And this is in response to that, say, well, wow, this is the topic of the day, maybe it's time to talk about these districts. So this is gonna be put on a ballot for each of us to accept or, or vote against. So, I mean, it's just a process and, uh, I, I can see that I'll be sitting through, uh, Commissioner Chang's list of, uh, issues here a few times in the next few weeks, next time we have a public meeting, I'm sure you'll do that again, but I see it very differently and I'm glad to have people engaged in the voting process. And, uh, you know, uh, this is, this is a moment, Deschutes County's one hundred and ten years old and we've been three commissioners. We used to be judge and two commissioners for about seventy-five years, now it's been three commissioners and a strong administrator position for thirty years or so. So this is, it's, it's a moment, it's a moment for us all.
I think it was really important to keep the precincts together. Um, I do believe that and, um, it averages out that, the average is thirty-two thousand nine hundred and seventy-four of my, um, math here that I just did by, by my head, so it's like thirty-three thousand people in each district and, that I used to live in Los Angeles, we had five supervisors and each supervisor represented two million people. So that's where I came from and, um, you know, I knew I could get ahold of my supervisor. Did I ever? I don't think so, because it was so big. But anyway, you know, it's, it's thirty, so at least you're gonna have someone that you can get ahold of that only represents approximately thirty-three thousand.
So I got a fun story about that Lancaster is in, I think, LA County on the other side of the mountains.
Yes.
And the, uh, Lancaster mayor was here talking about a solar, they, they went off solar years ago. So they were here in Deschutes County talking about it. And I was at the, at the meeting and after words, I said hi to him, he said, oh, who are you? I said, well, county commissioner here. County commissioner, that's like a supervisor, right? You know, and he's, his city's probably a couple hundred thousand or something. He's like, man, I've never even met the supervisors in LA County, you know, he was just so impressed that I was just hanging out at the meeting, talking to him. Cause it is a different world down there, with all those millions of people.
All there when they had the Polisates fire and Catherine Barger, who lived in my region, was actually like the representative.
It was just funny, his response.
Yes, supervisor, commissioner.
Yep.
I, um, I watched as many of the DMAC meetings as I could tolerate. It was, um, I think, uh, uh, a really great service for those people to serve on that committee because there was a lot of data, there was a lot of discussion and there was a lot of head scratching going on. Um, to, to your comment, Commissioner Chang, about, um, the, uh, looking at the, um, registration, voter registration, political party was very interesting because legal counsel advised them not to because if you do look at it, then you might be opening yourself up to it being gerrymandering. And I'm like, okay, so it's like darn if you do, darn if you don't. I, I, I could, I could feel the struggle amongst all of the committee members when they're hearing that. So that was kind of really interesting. And the other thing I was gonna say is that having the three commissioners, we're really fortunate right now. We've got Ben, Sisters Country and Lapine representation.
It's just, it had worked out that way, didn't it?
Yeah, it did, but thinking forward, if, when we have five seats, it's possible if we don't have districts that they could all be from Sisters, right?
Oh, sure.
Downtown Sisters.
We've got the. So I, I, all I'm trying to, all I'm trying to show is how, how, how difficult it must have been. I think because there's always seems to be another side to this story, and we'll see what the voters say.
Right, it'll be up to the voters.
And just to remind us, you probably said this just five minutes ago, Nick, but was, it's on the May ballot?
That'll be up for the Board of Commissioners.
This, we're receiving, this, this was finalized yesterday and the Board of Commissioners are receiving this recommendation. So this is the published map and it's by precincts, uh, you know, blocked by precincts. So we haven't talked about it yet, you know, this is our first meeting that we're receiving it at.
Okay, gotcha.
I haven't seen anybody taking a swing at each other, so, so far so good.
Well, thank you, Michael.
The map's very pretty, I'll tell you that.
Uh, so that's, so, uh, well, so for the map, the board, a Board of Commissioners has the authority to put things, uh, to a vote of the people, right? So we're gonna, probably, I mean, at the goal, my way, you know, I'm speaking this one. The goal is to get it on, uh, the ballot, so May next year, November is the other option. If we were to do it next year, we didn't do it in May, so, but May nineteenth, if it happens, so you think about this scenario, this could be on that ballot, but the four names for the four seats that are up, they won't be affected by this because they'll be on the same ballot, right? It'll be two years later that it would go to effect, uh, so that's where we're at. Yeah, well, that's, yeah.
What an impossible task, but, you know, it's, it's a lot of hard work, these things don't come up very often. It is, you know, to bring it home to Sisters, it is interesting trying to balance that community of interest, you know, sort of question for a small town like Sisters, you know, three, five hundred people being included all the way east of Bend, you know, it's a, and all the way north of Redmond. It's, it's, it's hard and our kind of situation of where we're located, plus our population. But, um, you know, you could see a case where someone from precinct twenty-one represents Sisters, which is, well, like the furthest you can go, you know?
Oh, I was just gonna say it was pretty eye-opening too, when it's, um, based on population to see the, how dense Bend area, I mean, it's all the little districts within Bend there. Um, so anyway, that was just an interesting thing to see there on the map.
But I was surprised that this, yeah, this purple section here, I would have assumed that the west side was a little bit more dense, you know, just population wise. So I would have assumed, you know, without seeing those numbers before they were published like that, how, uh, population, I thought it would have been flipped.
Yeah, I can see that, although there's, there are a lot of apartments on the east side of Bend.
Well, that tells you that there's a lot of Bend, uh, you know, very organized, uh, efficient development pattern in Bend this whole time. For a hundred years, probably, most of a hundred years.
I'm a proud resident of District Thirty, thank you.
There you go.
Um, so we are, um, apologies, a half an hour over. Um, but we have a slot for other businesses, is there anything burning?
Yeah, actually we told it was one till seven thirty.
Oh, were you?
Yeah, okay, that is what we were told, so you're right on time. I don't, honestly, I didn't remember, I knew we were kind of running out.
Well, look at that, we're just perfect.
Before we leave the, the, uh, before we, we leave this, this map, I, I, I guess I wanted to say, um, you know, to, to Councilor Peller, Pellerance's comments, uh, I very much believe in districting, I think it is the right thing to ensure that every region of our county is represented on the Board of Commissioners. Um, I just, in my opinion, it's very unfortunate that this is the way that, uh, our districting process turned out. Um, and, you know, when, uh, my fellow commissioners and I will be considering whether to send this to the, to the voters or not, uh, soon, I, I, I do wanna just kind of reflect for everyone that when, uh, something goes before the voters and it gets voted down, uh, it often takes a very long time, um, for it to come back. So the idea of, the idea of nonpartisan commissioners, the idea of, uh, going from three to five, uh, those things were in our, our Home Rule Charter that was proposed in two thousand and six, and when that measure failed, uh, because not enough people believed in those things at the time, it took until two thousand and two, or sorry, two thousand and twenty-two and two thousand and twenty-four, uh, for those ideas to come back. So I just wish we were sending, uh, a better, uh, district proposal to the voters, um, at this point in time.
Thanks, Commissioner Chang, appreciate that, um, clarification. Anybody else? You look like you have something to say.
Just, just one quick, quick update, as you're all aware of it, um, is that our building official, who is also your building official, um, is retiring, uh, that's Randy Scheid, he's retiring on December first. And so we're initiating, that recruitment is out now, um, Scott Woodward's agreed to be on the interview panel and the selection panel. Very important to have Sisters involved in that.
He's not applying and won't leave the city, is that what you're referring to?
Yeah, I just wanted to share that.
That's great. Well, that's great.
I'd like to be invited, he's going away, if you have a.
Oh, all the, yeah, I'll let the department know.
I mean, I've been working with this since, uh. I mean, he's been, he's been the answer guy since two thousand, as far as I know.
I think that's when he started, uh, and then he became building official, I, I appointed him building official about twenty thirteen, fourteen, when our prior building official, uh, retired.
Oh, and he was, uh, plans examiner or commercial or something or other, and I was down at the Park and Recreation District in Lapine years ago, uh, twenty years ago or so, and I didn't know who he was, but, uh, he, he just made a list of things that we had to improve or fix. And, uh, I got to know him through that, but it, it, there was one moment, he said, well, I think we're gonna need to sprinkle this building. And I, I had no idea that that was gonna be the most expensive thing I ever had to do, and, and it was just our park. And I I had no idea that that was gonna be the most expensive thing ever I had to do, and it was just our park building and nobody had ever done that before, but. I just remember that moment.
Yeah.
Randy Scheid. But yeah, he was a commercial plans examiner, I think, at the time.
Anything else? All right.
Are you gonna use the capital again?
Yeah. I better put it into.
Gotta have it, gotta have it.
We'll, we'll be good tonight.
There we go.